Thank you very much. That was absolutely fabulous. Okay. I would like to call to order the Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting, uh, I'm sorry, amended budget hearing for April 23rd, 2013. May I have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Shuler?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mrs. Wald?
Here.
Mr. Penderski? Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and I'd like to call Jen Hermes, and she will walk us through our amended budget.
Wow, what a nice crowd to hear the amended budget hearing. At the adoption of the 1213 budget, we stated at that time that we would be coming back to the board with an amended budget once we had final cost estimates associated with the Deerpath Tile Project and also the wonderful Cube that we experienced tonight. In addition, after the budget was approved, in December, the board took action to take advantage of an early payment option for IMREP. So that is also something that we would include in the amended budget. In February, per the board approval, we placed the tentative amended budget on public display, reflecting three changes: Deerpath Tile, Deerpath Cube Project, and that early payment. The only change that has been made since the February meeting is that we also added a change for the Cherokee Sound Abatement Project. This is a project that is on the agenda later this evening for approval. There was a, um, we've made an adjustment of $60,000 because the estimates on that, the bid came in higher than anticipated. So that has been adjusted to accommodate that change. Historically, we've experienced balanced budgets, and we wanted to make it clear that due to the items cited above, our expenditures this year will exceed our revenues. However, we knew this from the beginning. While these expenditures are addressed through our fund balances, they are a one-time occurrence, and they do not represent a trend. These are not operating fund expenditures. These are capital expenditures. Attached to the board's packet tonight, you have the summary pages. This is a budget hearing. We do have an opportunity for public comment, at which time afterwards, we will close the public comment, and then the board takes action on the amended budget during its regular meeting. I didn't go into a ton of detail. We've covered this a few times, but I'm more than happy to take any questions from the board.
Seeing no questions, oh, let me see my, I lost my, my screen. Uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board strictly on the budget, that they should do so at this time. Seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn from the budget hearing? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The budget hearing is adjourned. Now, I would like to call to order the City of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013. We did hold an executive session at 5:30 PM, but no, which we, uh, covered the discussion of matters related to the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. No action was taken. Um, we are now returning to open session. May I have a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wald?
Here.
Mr. Shuler?
Here.
Mrs. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. We'll begin with the President's report. Uh, first of all, board members, to follow up on something that was left open. Last Wednesday, we met together with District 115 to perform the annual superintendent's review. Part of that review includes a discussion of goals which are contained in Exhibit 1 of his contract, uh, and it's a super, it's a performance-based contract. We did spend a good deal of time discussing those goals and Exhibit 1, but we did not finish that discussion. Therefore, looking to the future, when the new board is seated, that will be one of the first tasks that they will need to complete in the first few weeks, is a continued discussion with Mr. Simic about the goals and Exhibit 1. After that, then, the goals will need to be approved in open session and presented and discussed in the open session. So this will be a great, uh, jumping off point for the new board. And then finally, recognizing, are there any questions about that, board members? Then finally, this is the last regular meeting that this board will attend to. And I wanted to reflect on the fact that about 18 months ago, we began the process together with District 115 of searching for a new superintendent. We invested a lot of time and energy making many decisions regarding the processes, the profiles we were seeking, gathering community input, and finally interviewing and hiring Mr. Simic. We have spent the past year growing together with Mr. Simic, sharing our perspectives and he sharing his perspectives of the things that he, many, many things he has observed in our schools and our community. I really want to express how proud I am of our current board members. Each individual has shown a real respect for teamwork and demonstrated that. You've also shown trust in each other. Throughout the processes, I have observed from all of you that you're really genuinely concerned about what is best for our students and best for our Lake Forest community, rather than acting on what is best for yourself as a politician. Going forward, I am very confident that the new board will develop into a team with those same priorities in mind. I think that they will also come to observe that Mr. Simic clearly cares very deeply about our students, and that is foremost in his mind when he has to make tough decisions, and actually, a lot, every decision. I believe that the biggest and the toughest decision that we had to make as a board was to hire our new superintendent. And together with District 115, we did a great job. We hired the right guy, and thanks to all of you for helping out. That concludes the President's report. And now we come to the superintendent's report.
Well, it is characteristic of really good people that when it comes time to say something, that they find a way to talk about somebody else. And that is certainly truer, more true of Mrs. Wald than of what anybody I know. As I said, eight years brings to close a final board meeting in which Mrs. Wald has dedicated eight years of her life to her community and to the children that are here tonight and that have passed through these halls of this building and others during the course of her tenure. This is really, really a big job, but these six people in front of you, Mr. Penderski couldn't join us tonight. Mr. Julian will also bring to close four years of incredibly dedicated service, as will Mr. Penderski. And these are the, the most honest and honorable and well-intentioned people. And one of the things you can see here tonight that's good for our students to see is instead of talking about themselves, they're talking about somebody else and saying kind things about them, and that is really, uh, remarkable and noteworthy, and the school board members, they dedicate huge amounts of their time and energy that no one ever sees. They're on TV every now and then, a few brief moments of glory, I think, right? And I'm sure they're not paid nearly what they need to be for those hours in the spotlight. But, um, with that, what's that? And I'm, I'm leaving out Mrs. Rose as well, and I'm getting gigged for that over here. So, and Mrs. Rose is bringing to close eight years on the board as well. And they care deeply and work hard and then read stuff at home on weekends and all sorts of odd hours of the day and night and communicate about that and say, hey, I have a question about all that stuff you sent home. And, uh, thank you for the kind words. So the President, so the superintendent's report, we have other things we want to talk about related to things that our board members care very much about, and Mrs. Leifman, would you care to begin that?
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Um, I'd like to invite our students who are involved in effort to come up and present. They've had an incredible year giving service to their school, their community, and globally as well.
Hi, my name is Clara Butler, and I'm in 7th grade, and this is my second year of Effort.
Hi, I'm Matthew Brogazi. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my, uh, second year in Effort.
Hi, my name is Alex Simpson, and I'm in 6th grade, and this is my first year of Effort.
My name is Tiana Belky. I'm in 8th grade, and this is my third year of Effort.
Hi, I'm Trisha Bagat. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my second year of Effort.
I'm Carl Robinson. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my first year of Effort.
Hi, I'm Marquand Nucci. I'm in 7th grade, and this is my second year of Effort.
Hi, I'm Emily Robinson, and this is my first year of Effort.
Hi, I'm Grace Platsch, and I'm in 5th grade.
Hi, I'm Missy Andrews. I'm 7th grade, and this is my third year of Effort.
Hi, my name is Kate Groide. I'm in 5th grade, and this is my first year of Effort.
Effort is a 5th through 8th student organization which stands for encouraging fundamental foundations of respect and trust. We work to promote positive culture and climate in our school and community.
A few highlights from this year include welcoming new families, planning our fall and winter festivals, and sponsoring the annual pumpkin decorating contest, which is a building-wide tradition.
This year, we have gone beyond the walls of our school and reached out locally and globally. In February, we participated in a service learning workshop with students from Lake Bluff and Lake Forest High School to learn more about Shields Township, uh, about what Shields Township does for our community. We learned in, in addition to other services, Shields runs a food pantry that supports families in our own community.
We wanted to do more for Shields Township. Effort submitted an application to present and raise money for the Shields Township Food Pantry at the DPM Annual Walkathon. While our cause was not chosen to walk for, we were selected as one of the top five organizations and had the opportunity to present in front of the entire DPM student body. It was a great experience, and part of this year's proceeds will go to Shields Township.
Globally, Effort partnered with Lake Forest resident and parent Allison Godwin, whose nonprofit organization, Africa Offline Incorporated, supports children's health and education in Sub-Saharan Africa. Not only have we been collecting various supplies for the children, such as Vaseline, at our December meeting, we also channeled our teamwork to create 15 fleece blankets for children who were born HIV-positive and have lost at least one parent.
Allison Godwin went to Uganda this January and personally delivered the blankets to the children. She corresponded with us when she was there and shared with us the following.
I wish I could convey the joy these children felt when they received these blankets. They have never received anything this nice. They'll never forget that special day in their lives. Go Effort. You're really changing lives. 15 kids won't be shivering tonight.
Ms. Godwin's travels and stories inspired our Effort group to help her make a difference in the lives of these children. We cannot express in words the feelings that we had while, when seeing the pictures of our blankets wrapped around these children.
Effort has had a great school year, and we are looking forward to carrying on this momentum into next year. Thank you so much.
The students are, are clearly empowered to do all of this work because they have two amazing sponsors, two teacher sponsors, Ms. Tivron and Ms. Emily Correa.
Thank you for coming and sharing, and we also have another report on things that our students have been working on from Mrs. Epke.
Thank you. We hope you enjoyed our, your preview of our Cube. And there's so many people that have worked tirelessly to ready this space for student use. As you can see, we're almost there. Our goal is to officially open our doors to students and teachers during the first week of May. One of the things I'm most proud of is that, has been the way we have incorporated student voices throughout the project. Here are five students to share their hopes and ideas, how their hopes and ideas for the space have become a reality. I'd like to welcome up Will Zordani, Andrew, Sarah, Kelsey, and Will Stock.
Hello, my name is Andrew Walther. I'm in 7th grade. Um, so I imagined having a space that all of the kids at Deerpath could come together and work. And now, because of the spirit and the collaboration of our students, we can. Thanks.
Hi, I'm William Stock. I go to Deerpath Middle School. Here, I'm in 7th grade. And I dreamed to teach younger, younger kids new technology. And now that we have the Cube open and it's equipped with a, a great source of new technology, I'm able to live that dream, so, thank you.
I'm Will Zordani, and I'm in 6th grade. I imagine a space that is very modern, filled with technology, and is a great place to learn, and now we have that at the Cube. Thank you.
I'm Sarah Byers in 5th grade. When I was first selected to design the Cube, I thought this would just be a library or something like that. Boy, was I wrong. This place has updated technology, study rooms, projectors, and comforts I never knew existed. Thanks to District 67, I now have the learning tools I need.
I'm Kelsey Marks in 5th grade, and when I first was introduced to the Cube idea, I was so excited that us kids could have a little place to hang out, relax, and do projects on computers. Um, but when I saw it for the first time, I was totally stunned. I couldn't, um, believe all of the awesome technology, especially the iPads. I'm so lucky to live in a district with so many generous donors so we can have special things like this. Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you, students, and thank you, families, for bringing your kids here to share with us tonight.
This brings us to public participation. Is there any member of the audience that would like to address the board? Hi. Then please state your name and address, and try and limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jennifer Mauer, and I live at 709 Beverly Place. Um, I'm here tonight concerning the riff of Linda Biondi, and I want to explain why. We live in a community of high standards where the norm is just not good enough. We have schools filled with great teachers and bright students who excel at all that they do. All the parents in our community want our schools to be filled with great and loving teachers, and most of the parents I talked to, and most of the teachers as well, truly appreciate the implementation of this new evaluation process, which promotes professional conversation about how to make our schools even better. We are delighted a more rigorous evaluation process will support improved learning environments and enhance the professional practice in our schools. That being said, you, our school board members, have a duty to ensure that the implementation of this new evaluation procedure is delivered in an ethical and fair manner, and that teachers are not singled out for personal reasons or evaluated in such a way as to destroy their careers unnecessarily and in a biased and prejudiced way. It's simply inconceivable that the most requested and most beloved teacher in District 67 received the lowest evaluation rating of all the teachers in the entire school district. When properly implemented, the ratings of the Danielson Framework, which our school implemented this year, are directly aligned with student performance. One could surmise that since Cherokee School consistently outperforms other elementary schools in test scores in 3rd grade as a major testing year, it's hard to see how any core 3rd grade teacher at Cherokee could get an unsatisfactory or needs improvement rating if their test scores demonstrate the most growth. It's widely documented in data-driven studies of the proper use of this new evaluation tool that teachers who are rated as unacceptable or unsatisfactory as Mrs. Biondi was are teachers who are doing academic harm in the classroom. Think about that. Teachers rated as unacceptable are teachers who oversee students who do not experience any learning gains during the school year. We as parents know that Linda Biondi does not have a test score problem because we see enormous growth in our children and we see the test scores. As such, if the tool was properly implemented, how could Mrs. Biondi have an unsatisfactory rating? That's why you're seeing this unprecedented parent reaction on this matter because something just does not seem right with this situation. The administration is known about the new state law and new evaluation tool since it became a law in 2008. The Chicago Public Schools posted an impressive document online in August of 2012 to prepare their teachers for this new process. It's called Framework for Teaching Companion Guide. Why did our district not use a similar tool? The Danielson Framework is intended to be collaborative and constructive tool to improve teaching practice. We're all for that, however, any reasonable person seeing the language in Mrs. Biondi's evaluation readily observes it's far from constructive. All of this seems particularly cruel because state law shuts the door for any teacher ripped with a rating of unacceptable or unsatisfactory to ever work again as a teacher. There is no recourse for this teacher to be rehire, rehired, or teach, or substitute teach elsewhere. This is devastating both professionally and personally, and does not represent the standard this community expects. It is incumbent on this board to make certain that the results of the evaluation are valid and substantiated, and that the intent and structure of the Danielson Framework is valid and reliable to is a valid and reliable tool for measuring teaching practices in our district going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, any other...all right, we are gonna move on? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
My name is Maria O'Rourke and I live at 920 Grand Belane in Lake Forest. And I actually am just gonna follow up briefly on commenting on Jennifer's comments. I want the board to know that Jennifer spoke tonight on behalf of a very large contingent of parents, some who couldn't be here and some couldn't be here. Lest the board think that it's one parent speaking out, I want to assure you that it is most assuredly not the case. We have a very large group of parents who are concerned about this and are concerned about the process, not just the result, but the process and how it took place. At the last parent meeting, Mr. Simic informed the parents that the board can never overturn a decision that had already been made. I tried to do a little quick research to see how that is the case or where that is the case. I was unable to come up with anything, so we'd be interested to know pursuant to what rule of law that that would be or the rule that governs the board. And if it is indeed the case, we're just here to put the board on notice and the administration on notice that the parent community continues to support this particular teacher and will continue to support this teacher in different arenas, including supporting her in legal action against the district if necessary. We just don't want the board to underestimate our resolve in this matter. It's not something that we feel has been resolved satisfactorily. It's not something that's gonna go away in our minds when school lets out in June. Our community holds itself to a high standard, as Jennifer said, and we expect our elected officials and other public employees to do the same. The board and the administration has lost the trust of a lot of parents and there's been a lot of discussion about that over the past two weeks. It's been particularly disturbing to me as a resident of Lake Forest to hear such an outpouring from the parents and over and overhearing that they've lost trust in the administration, that they've lost trust in the board, that they didn't, they felt like they were in a parallel universe where the rule of law wasn't being followed. And I want to make sure that the incoming board really understands that there's a lot of work to do to repair that trust. And frankly, I'm not sure what the administration can do to repair the relationship. Reexamining the decision in a fair and transparent manner would be a start. And we would appreciate if you took those comments under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will move to our reports and discussion, the K-8 Math Programming.
Thank you, Mrs. Wald, and there's been a great deal of work done on the K-8 Math Program. And Dr. Hendrickson will introduce that for us. Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce three of the math committee members, elementary math committee members, that have worked so hard. We had a really terrific group and these smart, intelligent teachers who worked hard for about a year have come to present. I want to introduce Sue Christensen, second-grade teacher at Cherokee, Anna Brugeman, third-grade teacher at Cherokee, and hopefully, once the personnel report is approved, our new elementary math coach, Nikki Hanneman, who's been teaching the Bridges program over at Sheridan for some years. So they're gonna present our conclusion to implement Bridges next year.
Hi, first I want to say what we're currently using in our district for K is Bridges and Number Corners and what we're currently using for grades one through four is everyday math. With the new Common Core coming up, our math curriculum team met early fall to look at what we're currently using and to look at future programs. And the committee was made up with numerous of teachers at all different grade levels, K through four. We had an Explorer teacher and Special Education teacher on the committee as well, so we were hitting all the areas. We also had Janice Heigl, who's a math consultant, to help us with our thoughts and our committee. So our first thing in October, we came up with like seven different programs we looked at just kind of briefly. And then from those seven programs, we narrowed it down to four programs that we thought were good. And those four programs were Stepping Stones, Bridges, Investigations, and Invisions. From those four programs, we spent a day looking at them, talking to the representatives of each program. We chose two. We chose Investigations and Bridges to find more information about. At that time, teachers went and observed each curriculum being taught. They went to Winneka to watch Investigations and they went to Lake Bluff to watch Bridges. And then also, teachers at each grade level were given the opportunity to field test both curriculums to see which they liked. It was optional and everybody on the committee field tested. And then we got back feedback from all the teachers who field tested it to find out which curriculum or which program they liked. And that from the field testing and observations and the Common Core, which we're gonna talk a little bit more about, we chose Bridges and Number Corners to move forward with starting next year.
One of the things that we felt very strongly about was that Bridges promoted the use of the Common Core practices. There's eight Common Core practices that require children to look at math in a little bit different way, asking them to be particularly engaged in their learning, to collaborate, to do a lot of critical thinking and to talk about math using precise mathematical vocabulary and concrete understanding of math. And that's one of the things that Bridges does very well. It requires students to use manipulatives. It asks them to really establish a solid understanding of abstract concept before moving on to higher mathematical thinking. So we're hoping that it will really give our students a core understanding of mathematical concept. The other consideration that we took very seriously was the Danielson Framework for Effective Teaching. And we felt that Bridges supported our teachers in that framework as well, promoting classroom conversations, communication with students, the use of questioning and discussion prompting, all of those things that would support the teacher in establishing the kind of effective teaching model that we are looking for.
Alright, so that was one component of the Bridges curriculum and it's called Number Corner, which basically, as you can see, dialogue amongst the students is precedent. And it's not only just a teacher communicating what you're supposed to do to the students. The students are basically coming up with their own way of learning, you know, subjective to themselves. What are they learning? How are they learning and what's best fit for them? And so that Number Corner aspect really pushes the dialogue amongst children as well as discourse between them and arguments, obviously respectful arguments, and allows them to learn in the way that's fit for their own mind. I had the opportunity to go to NCTM Conference last week and it was amazing. The amount of research and babies that's being done about mathematics I had never known and all of these new ways of teaching mathematics. And so what you see are people who are saying things like the definition of a good teacher has since changed from one to explain so well that their students understand to one who gets students to explain things so well that they can be understood. And so what we want to do with that is really encourage the students to do their own thinking and with that, the teachers will need to change as well. So professional development is key with this kind of a thing. This kind of a switch in the way that we're teaching mathematics and what we're expecting of them, the rigor in this. So we have some summer work planned with Janice Heigl as well as myself, some half-day workshops that are continuing throughout the year with them, seeing what they need, being flexible with the teachers, making sure that they're supported in every way so that their students can grow. Math consultant Janice Heigl, and I will say the people from Bridges, I've never been hugged so much in my entire life, they're well-represented and so inviting as far as professional development is concerned. So this, it's, they are in it for children and not just to sell a product, which is so refreshing. And of course, hopefully, I'll be the math coach to gear that up for K-4 and a big job. And I'm understanding of that and hoping to support people as much that I can. It's been, Bridges has been a fabulous curriculum to work with and I've seen the new updated version and had a chance to teach with it. And the children, even in my class, and you're all welcome to come see that if you want to, it's quite amazing to see them interact with one another with the way that they do in mathematics. And they're all different. Every child's different, so we're excited about that. And parent communication as well, things are gonna change, so it's scary. It's scary for everybody to see that. But the more information you can have, the more, you know, studies to back it up, reasoning, research that's out there right now in the past ten years that's been done and the why we're learning mathematics the way we do. So just some meetings for parents led by me or various teachers, curriculum night presentations for them, which will be so much fun, and ongoing parent communication so that we can keep them involved in the why that it's happening so that there's no question behind it because it will look different than the everyday math that's going on right now.
Could you just say something about the schedule for rolling it out and everything? And also, I know you've been piloting it for a period of time and like how many classes you piloted it?
Yeah, there's been quite a few classes that have piloted it. Yeah, maybe about twenty. We did spend some time with both curriculums, the Investigation Curriculum and the Bridges Curriculum. And I will admit that I am still using the Bridges program even though the pilot is done. I've pulled some of those products out. We still have access to them. And my kids love them. They're very, very engaged in it. And so I've shared those materials with my teammates and things like that. So I know that there have been quite a few people that have experienced and have had very positive feedback about the programs.
I was gonna say, and teachers have used it a little bit this year and have had, it's pretty easy to have access online, so we've all been online looking. And then most of our professional development will be during the summer and then when we come back to school. So we're hoping to have most of the product by early June, I think, so we have the summer to investigate a little bit further.
Can I ask, on that same question, can you talk a little bit about how it affects kids that are in kindergarten versus second grade versus fourth grade? And how they transition into middle school?
You know, I would say that obviously the kids going into first grade will have very little transition because they're used to the language, they're used to everything that goes on. It's a wonderful program where things are built and the skills increase, although the actual embedded game doesn't change. You're just changing what's going on and what they're using. Instead of adding, they might be adding two-digit numbers or decimals or fractions, things like that. So there's no transition for those kindergartners. It will look differently for the kids going into second, third, fourth, although they've all had it in kindergarten, so it should pop up for them. The wonderful thing is I talked to the writer for the third through fifth grade portion of Bridges and she's the same writer for Agile Minds, so she has a really good impact on both of those programs. And so you're transitioning in with the same mindset, basically, of how children are learning. It's all problem-solving based. They are forced, not forced, they're given the opportunity to do their own thinking in both of those programs. So it's not a change in the way that they're getting taught necessarily. It's just a change in how the teachers are teaching them from first through fourth grade, I would say, at this point in time. So if you have any other questions for that or I can take it further.
I just had one, I'm sorry, I said one other question. On the classes where you've been piloting it, have you had response from the parents? And how do you make sure that they're sort of brought along and understand what you're trying to do?
That's a good question. I think, sorry, it's a good question. I think that the parent communication has been pretty open this year because there have been a lot of changes and there have been a lot of things that we as teachers are implementing and working on with the Common Core. So a lot of that conversation has come through newsletters and emails and questions that they might have had about homework or things like that. I've been very open with my students about the fact that this is new. We're trying it. We're seeing what kinds of things help us be better learners and what kinds of things make us maybe not think as hard. And so I've put the impetus on them, of course I have third graders, but I put the impetus on them to explain it to their parents and talk to them about what they're doing.
I was gonna say, we also presented this to CCC the other night and a couple of parents. We looked at a unit and we talked to them about the differences as well.
There are differences in homework. Oh, sure. The differences in homework do tend to be, the Bridges program has a different, a whole different setup for homework than everyday math. And the kind of homework the kids are going to get is going to be a review or a practice of skills that they need, like basic skills. That deep thinking, problem solving is gonna be going on in the classroom where the homework that they're gonna have will be interactive, maybe a game with their parents or a follow-up activity to a skill that they need to have, like fractions or a multiplication game or things like that. So that will be something to think about.
Yeah, I was just gonna lead into, it's not a spiraling curriculum. You're not gonna see the spiral. So what they're doing is we're taking all of these mathematical concepts and we're linking them together because that's the way a person learns. They're not going to learn in isolation. They're going to learn by linking these concepts together. Oh, I know, you know, multiplication, it's the same as addition. We're going to use what they know in order to figure out what they don't know. And so there is a difference. We're not, you know, you'll find it's, you know, the quote-unquote, it's not a mile wide inch deep anymore. We're really going deep in understanding so that we can build on it and have this really solid foundation of skills to work upon.
And you might, you might find some different concepts that go together in a different way. Like we did division and fractions together. So they really had to understand that connection and it was a deeper connection than just learning how to divide into fractions.
Can you talk about Explorer Math and Quest? And does it have any impact? Do you still need those segregations? Is it implemented differently?
It's not necessarily implemented differently at this time, but that's certainly something that we're taking into consideration. So it's something that is always on the back of our mind as we move into this new curriculum and kind of a new way of teaching math because you want those kids to experience things even if they're not, you know, part of the regular ed classroom. These are rich experiences that we're providing for them. So I think we as a group are starting to discuss that more and we've, we've obviously had a lot on our shoulders at this point in time and just coming to an end with that. And that is one of the top things that we're going to discuss is the Explorer Program and things like that, but nothing's set for next year.
And one of the things we've talked about, yeah, we've, we've definitely talked about the component of Number Corner being done with the whole class. So when all of the students are in the homeroom class doing that component together to really get the rich, deep discussion. That's something that we are working out with our schedules to see how that will work.
How do you implement it into Mandarin program? It's translated into Mandarin. It's translated into Mandarin. They have a program that's strictly translated directly into Mandarin, so.
So they'll be educated over the summer, just like yourselves?
The Mandarin teachers? Yeah.
It pays to wait, because every question that I've been sitting here waiting to ask, you've gotten to, so excellent and good question.
Thank you very much, very informative.
And now that brings us to the Deer Path Middle School One-on-One Initiative.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And the board members are getting a little snippet of what is on the way for our students as they are using the new computers themselves. So with that, Mrs. Epke.
Yeah, we hope you're enjoying your Chromebooks there. We thought it would be kind of a fun experience, since you were going to be having your board meeting here in the Cube, that we would give you kind of the same experience that our students are having. We are in about the fourth week of our Chromebook pilot, and we've had students in fifth through eighth grade kind of trying them out, and some teachers who were just kind of working with one of our loners. And we had, actually, we have two different brands of Chromebook. We have the Samsung, which is in front of you, and there's another brand that's Acer. And so we have both of those kind of being piloted. And what's really interesting is that the students and the teachers don't really, you know, they're kind of split. Some prefer the Acer, some prefer the Samsung. But one thing that they are all 100% on is that they are in love with the Chromebooks. So we have decided this will be our one-to-one device for 2013, 2014. And with that, we also know that our netbooks are still, many of them are still very viable. We have our fifth graders who are only in their first year of a brand-new, they received brand-new netbooks this year, as well as some of our eighth graders received just brand-new one-year-old netbooks. So that being said, we will be having a blended one-to-one environment next year. So some of our students will have Chromebooks and some will have netbooks. And the way we spent a lot of discussion time and a lot of hard time thinking and had a lot, there were a lot of people lobbying for their grade levels and students lobbying for their grade levels, who should get the Chromebooks. But what we decided was that our incoming fifth graders, so that would be our class of 2017, that they'll be getting new Chromebooks, which makes sense, because then they'll be able to carry the Chromebooks through for five years, sorry, four years. And then our fifth graders, class of 2016, moving up to sixth grade, they'll keep their one-year-old netbooks. Then our seventh graders will also receive Chromebooks, the Samsung Chromebooks, and then our eighth graders will, as we collect all of our netbooks for the summer, will be going through, and our class of 2014 will be getting the very best that we have, the first, the one-year-old and the two-year-old netbooks, the very best of the best. All of the remaining netbooks, then, will be used as loners and in various small sets. Some teachers have already asked if they could have some small sets of netbooks available for particular projects, because one of the qualities of a Google netbook, or Google Samsung Chromebook, is that you cannot install any sort of software on them. So some of the programs do require software downloads, so that's why the netbooks are still a viable option for us. Also, we do have some students that require specialized software for different learning needs, so we'll be supplying them also as well with a netbook. That being said, I know one of the things we did in the fall was to interview our seventh and incoming seventh and eighth grade parents, so the current sixth and seventh grade parents, to gather some information on the option of a bring-your-own-device for seventh and eighth grade. In other words, we would offer a one-to-one device, but if parents wanted to allow their child to bring a device. And it was really interesting. Parents and teachers were very in favor of this idea, but when the question came is to whether they would actually send their child to school with a device, most were not in favor of it. So that told me that we're not ready for this kind of option just yet. So we will not be honoring that at this time. So that being said, I know we have many happy students who are looking forward to using the Chromebooks next year. And I know from an IT perspective, they're really great, because as, there's not a lot of updating for us, or we don't have to image them every summer, that every, the changes that need to be made can be done from a dashboard. I just, you know, can pull it up on my laptop and we can make changes. And every time a child restarts, it refreshes that Chrome browser, so it's supplying its own updates as well. So we're really pretty excited about them.
Judy, can you just clarify? I've had a couple of parents ask me, well, if my child gets a Chromebook in seventh grade and then he's done in eighth grade, there is still that option to buy the device. What is the option? You give it back or you buy it? What are the prices?
Well, currently, right now, we certainly, our outgoing eighth graders will be, will have the option of buying a netbook. So some of our netbooks that we will be pulling in for the summer, we will be offering that. And basically, what we've always looked at is, over four years, if, as a family pays into the netbook program, at the end of four years, they have essentially purchased their one-to-one device. So really, the fourth, the fifth graders currently will be the first group that will have paid in for four years. So we'll be kind of prorating that based on the type of device that we would be, you know, giving out. What we'd, the seventh graders next year who would be getting the Chromebooks, they would certainly keep them for a second year. And at that time, we'll have to evaluate, would we sell them a Chrome, a two-year-old Chromebook? Would we hang on to those? You know, that kind of thing. But there will always be, you know, for the next four years, a device for those students to either own outright or to, an option to purchase.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. That was very, and I gotta say, I really liked the device.
I think when it comes to picking which brand, it's like when I bought my, I recently bought new golf clubs that were 15 years old, and I went to, I sampled four new brands, modern technology, and I went to a teaching pro and I said, which one should I choose? And he said, pick any one, just get rid of your 15-year-old clubs and you'll be a lot better off.
All right. On that note, we'll move to our board committee reports. First, we have the Board of Education Committee with Leslie Fisher, Bill Anderson, and Rick Schuler.
Good evening, and we are very happy to be here. I'll speak on behalf of myself. I am very happy to be here tonight, adjacent to the Cube. It was, we were new to the education committee, Bill and myself, and since then, we've had Rick join us. When Dr. Griffith, I think, gave us a phone call a winter and a half ago saying, the kids and the teachers have this great idea for that space over at Deer Path, can you meet me over there? And we did come and we did talk a lot and got to sit in and listen to the kids especially come down there and talk about the vision they had and meet with the architects and all the people that would one day help, including you, Jennifer. And it is wonderful to see it come to fruition. And I'm excited not only about tonight, about the kickoff, but about how it's going to affect our kids in a positive way. We live in a time where there isn't enough time to collaborate. We are busy because of the activities that we are in, because of the work that we have, and because of some of the interests we have, that if you look at them with one-on-one devices and all the technology that goes on, it can be a little self, just into yourself, not really out with others. And this space, I believe, is going to make a difference, and I'm excited about it. So at our education committee meeting on Tuesday, April 16th, we were joined by our education committee as well as over a dozen community members who were guests, including three of our new incoming board members. And much of what was discussed has already been presented tonight. So the math program was discussed at length. We actually had Brittany Jewell and Kathy Glennon, a second and third grade, both second and third grade teachers at Everett School, come and talk to us about the program, much like the teachers did here tonight, and got a great explanation. And one of the things I know that I was most excited about is not only how it aligns with the Common Core and the rigor and the higher levels of thinking, but that it really lends itself as a great precursor to Agile Minds, which now we've begun for our core math students at the fifth grade level in order to ease that transition, as I know this year has been a bit of a transition for that. So looking forward to that. So we did hear about that, and we also heard about the Chromebooks. So Judy Epke, as she was tonight, was there with us and presented a very similar report. We didn't get to use these. I'm glad that we've gotten to use them now, and we know that the feedback from teachers and kids is very positive. Other things on our agenda included the Mandarin program, and it was touched on a little bit. A couple of questions included, what happens when the kids who are in Mandarin at the elementary schools get to DPM? What does their schedule look like? A discussion was had about music and foreign language and brain development, and test scores, and how are they similar or non-similar to kids who are in Mandarin or not in Mandarin? And to most of these questions, I think all and more, a formal presentation is going to be delivered at the Board of Ed meeting, in fact, our next one in May, is that correct? Okay. Julie Cooley was there, discussed spring NWEA results, and it's too early to tell, but again, seemingly inaccurate. There are a lot of growing pains that go along with having assessments aligned with the new Common Core. So until our new assessment that we are going to be using, the PRC assessment, in 2014, 15, we're sort of in a waiting game. The NWEA, though, is still going to be used to take a snapshot in the fall of where our kids are, to give teachers a solid baseline, so they know when their kids are coming in what they know and what they need to know. And the last thing we discussed was the DPM proposal for late arrivals. And I actually thought at the meeting that that meant, what are we going to do about all these kids that are late for school? But that wasn't it, no. What it was about was very similar to how our K-4 buildings have the CII time built in on Monday afternoons. Kids get out an hour early. I know you all know, as you're shaking your heads, understand that. Time, it has been heard and understood by us, by the administration, and heard from teachers alike, that the DPM teachers want a time to be able to collaborate with fellow teachers. And because of the way scheduling works out, that's not always possible. So it is suggested, perhaps, that in the upcoming school year, three to four late starts may occur. And some of the things that may be worked upon would be capturing kids' hearts programs, that would be a potential focus, and other things that teachers feel are worthy of collaboration. And there are many things on the docket. And I think that's it. So thank you all. Bill, would you like to add anything?
I have nothing to add.
Rick, would you like to add anything?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much for a very interesting report. That brings us to the Board Finance and Operations Committee with Lori Rose, John Julian, and Jeff Pendersky.
We have new operations committee report this month. John, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, when the heck are we going to meet next? Do we know the next meeting date? We haven't met since the last meeting, and we haven't scheduled one up, all right. I was going to say, so one is coming up. At this point, though, no report.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our liaison reports. First, we have the North Suburban Special Education District. Lori Rose.
I also have no NSCD report this month.
Thank you. The Illinois Association of School Boards and Ed Red, Bill Anderson.
There is no report this month.
Thank you. We have the Curriculum Coordinating Committee. Lori Rose.
I do have a Curriculum Coordinating Committee report. The Curriculum Coordinating Committee met on Monday, April 15th, and three, four topics on the agenda. The first one, Chromebooks, which you heard considerable about tonight. I'd just like to add that I think it's exciting that our district is evolving in terms of our technology and continuing to reassess now that we have the Cube. I hope this is a more frequent occurrence, and I think the students and teachers alike are looking forward to the Chromebooks. Another topic which you heard a great deal about earlier is the K-4 Bridges and Number Corner Program, presented by Anna Brugman and Nikki Haneman. They were assisted in the CCC by math committee representatives Melanie Constantino and Sue Christensen, who was also presenting tonight. I won't go into too much detail, because you've heard a considerable amount. And finally, on the math front, the Agile Mind program, a move into algebra and core math for eighth grade. This is a relatively new, exciting development in our district, and over the last couple months, Mike Simic has spent a lot of time with the board talking about math and studying it, analyzing it, comparing our math program and approach to other districts. Personally, I found it one of the most exciting and refreshing initiatives that we've had in a long time. And this represents part of that thinking of extending the algebra program to students who wouldn't necessarily have an opportunity to do it early on in high school. Currently, our percentage for students who complete eighth grade algebra and move into Lake Forest High School Algebra II or Geometry is around 65%. And it's our belief that by increasing the Agile Mind programming, we can increase that percentage and ramp up the math program in general. And finally, another math-related item, the Summer Algebra Academy for the core math students currently in grades six and seven will take place from June 18th through July 12th this summer, and it'll have a first, well, maybe not first, they've done a bit of it in sixth and seventh grade, but a real opportunity to dive into algebra and increase their pre-algebra skills in order to maintain their confidence and success in years ahead. So I also wanted to mention that it's a little bit difficult to talk about what happens in the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, but I think tonight's math presentation was an excellent example of the subject area teams coming through, thinking about different programs, evaluating them, going out into different communities, and really studying them. And that is a process that I hope with Mr. Simic's guidance and leadership and others as well will continue in other areas. This concludes the Curriculum Coordinating Committee report.
Thank you very much, Lori. That brings us to the Spirit of 67 Foundation. The Spirit Board met on Tuesday, April 9th. Total contributions for the year are at $112,000, with total revenues projected to be about $226,000. The Board approved the budget for next year. The Board also reviewed and approved the grants recommended by the Grant Committee. On Thursday evening, two evenings away, is the Grants Reception at Elloa Farms. I would really encourage any board member who is able to attend. You get to hear about all the grants and the teachers and administrators or students who are going to use them and what vision they have for those grants. And then finally, on Thursday, May 2nd, is the Spirit of 67 Home Tour. I just really want to say thank you very much to all the Spirit provides for our students, and the Cube is a fabulous example of that. That concludes the Spirit of 67 Foundation.
Julia, question. How's the fundraising compared to last year?
It is, it is down about $10,000 from last year. There has been a lot of discussion at the Spirit Board about that.
But close.
Yes, close.
Reasonably close.
And then we have other, are there any other committee reports that a board member would like to report? Seeing none, we come to our action items. The first item is the approval of the amended budget. Mr. Simic?
Yes, as previously presented by Mrs. Hermes, recommend its approval as presented.
Any further discussion, board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the amended budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schuler?
Aye.
Mrs. Rose?
Aye.
Mrs. Wold?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the approval of the Cherokee Sound Abatement. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. This is a good neighbor effort that we have going on at Cherokee. We've got some noise that is bothering neighbors there and been working with the city to identify the problem and then address it. And so if any questions on that, Mrs. Hermes or Mr. Alvis could address.
Just as a point of reference, the Operations Committee did tour Cherokee School, is that a year ago now, probably? And we did see the offending chiller, which apparently is very loud in the summertime. So this is basically, we couldn't hear it because the chiller was not on at that time. It was, it was in the late fall or early spring. But it has apparently been quite loud, so this will help solve that problem. But it has apparently been quite loud, so this will help solve that problem.
May I have a motion to approve the Cherokee Sound Abatement?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Then we have the approval of Life Touch renewal. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. This is a routine renewal, and I don't know if Mr. Alvis or Mrs. Hermes have anything to add to this discussion.
Just one reminder that if you do recall, that Lake Forest does not use our photography services or our packages as a fundraiser. Many schools do, but we do not receive commission off of any of our packages.
So that's why this is strictly a pass-through, correct? So the pass-through means that we collect the money, but then we pass it through to the vendor. May I have an approval of the Life Touch renewal?
Still moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Julian. Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the approval of the 2014-2015 calendar. Mr. Simic.
We're skipping the, the...
Oh, pardon me. First, we have the approval of the retirement agreement. Mr. Simic.
Yep, thank you, Mrs. Wold. And this is approval of what we have discussed on a number of occasions and executive session, and the execution of this agreement here is, must be done in open session.
May I have a motion to approve the retirement agreement?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Next, we have the approval of the 2014-2015 calendar.
And I'd like to call on Mr. Saminsky to bring us up to speed on this.
Good evening. Paul Saminsky, Assistant Principal on Deer Path West, the seventh and eighth grade side. In working on the 2014-15 calendar, I first went back to the previous years, which I had worked on, the 13-14 calendar. Excuse me. And we wanted to create another collaborative approach to it. So looking for representation from LFAA, APT, SEIU, and bring them together to review the calendar. Mrs. Terry Green represented the SEIU, Mrs. Christine Tice from APT, and our incoming APT president, Mr. Ben Gray from LFAA, and myself representing the administration. So we started with, like any basic calendar, starting off with the days on the calendar. Then we moved into the federal holidays. Then we, we wanted to make sure that it aligned with Lake Forest High School. We wanted to make sure it worked out with Lake Bluff, to sort of work out to all the holidays, institute days. We have a tri-district institute in February, so to make sure that that worked. And of course, the contractual obligations, making sure that the calendar, the amount of days that the students are in session, that teachers are in session, while also projecting those extra five days at the end in case we get some of those unexpected snow days. So are there any questions off of that?
I really like how you included the issue specific to Lake Forest maximizing full weeks for instruction. Any other questions?
I would like to note, I thought it was good that the, one of the things that we had heard from a number of parents is that they travel, particularly on, at Easter, and they had difficulty returning from that trip. And then teachers commented that there are large numbers of students that were absent on those dates as well. I think this, you know, in deference to religious travels that parents have, much like parents travel for Thanksgiving. I thought that was a very good thing to include that.
Yeah, there was a conversation with Mr. Thor Benson from Lake Forest High School. He does set up the calendar for Lake Forest High School. And they had mentioned that they had moved back to offering that Monday off after Easter. So we wanted to make sure we were in line with that as well.
Yes, that's a good thing to point out. All right, may I have a motion to approve the 2014-2015 calendar?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we have the approval of the amended calendar for 2012 to 2013, because I believe we had a snow day this year.
Yeah, I don't know who called that, but... I was just really, really happy that when I looked out in the morning and there wasn't a flake of snow on the ground, that it began to snow furiously as the day wore on. So we had to amend our calendar. At least we had a respectable amount of snow by the end of the day. This is the formal amendment of the calendar to accommodate that decision.
Any questions, Board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the amended calendar for 2012 to 2013? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to O. Six to zero, rather. Next, we have the approval of student fees for 2013 and 2014. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. And I will, most of the fees have remained flat. Mrs. Hermes might have something to add related to these. We discussed this earlier today.
Thank you. Yes, we are proposing no change in fees to most of the majority of the fees. Technology, consumable, band, orchestra, chorus, interscholastic, extended day, preschool, transportation will all stay the same. We do have a couple of tweaks. We are recommending that we impose a transportation late fee to hopefully deter families from withholding bus registration and fee payment past the deadline. We're having a difficult time getting all the students routed in time to make the effective start to the school year. So hopefully, we'll get those on time, and our routes will be well set in advance of the start of school. Pass-through fees that we talked about earlier, we don't really set those as yet, but whatever our cost is, that's what they charge us. Typically, we don't see a lot of changes to those. Those are gym suits, instrumental rentals, the yearbooks, things of that nature. I don't anticipate any changes to that at this time. We did make a naming change. We changed the net book fee, has now been renamed with the help of Mrs. Epke, to the one-to-one device. So that will appear on this year's fees. Food service, we have not typically delayed setting of some of our fees, with the exception of the pass-throughs, but we are asking for a delay this year on the setting of our meal and milk price. As many of you are aware, we did a full program review of our food service program, and we've been piloting, really after winter break, but heavily after spring break, some of the new changes. And we don't feel at this time that we have enough data collected from those pilots to make a formal recommendation. Preliminary numbers would indicate that we would need an increase to sustain some of our increased use of organics and some of the programming changes. However, looking at some of the large-scale changes, for example, if we were to do, continue some of the more prepared, fresh onsite and expand that into many more of our entrees, that that would increase the price beyond the point that we felt would be supported by our parents and our students and our community. So we would like to conclude the school year and finish crunching our numbers from those pilots, and then come back to the Board with a recommendation on those prices.
Comment on that. So the increased fee for transportation, the late fee there is not there in terms of revenue. It's there to discourage certain behavior that winds up being problematic for a large number of parents because they can't get their children's transportation schedules on time because of so many late changes, correct?
It is exactly what it is. It was not uncommon, particularly this last summer, but experienced a little bit the summer before, that we were getting registrations in the day before school, or two days before school started. And we really start routing much further in advance. And so when you're trying to get a large number of students on routes that are already set, it changes the entire route and potentially the number of buses and routes that we have. So hopefully, it's $25 late fee that, you know, if there's a little bit of incentive, maybe, or disincentive to, you know, maybe turning in those in late, our routes would be more effective.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Board members?
I just had a question, Mrs. Hermes. Do you know when the decision will be made with respect to the food later this summer or during the school year?
I would anticipate that we would bring that to the Board in July, so once we close the school year and have time through the end of June to kind of look at the numbers.
Any further questions? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the student fees for 2013 and 2014?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries six to zero. Then we have the approval of the Michigan State University contracts for the Mandarin teachers. Mr. Simic.
Thank you, Mrs. Wold. This is the formal approval for our Mandarin teachers that Dr. Anderson will discuss with us.
So briefly, just making sure that we have excellent teachers is the key to this program. And this is a difficult combination of person to find, somebody that is fluent in Mandarin and is Illinois-certified. So there have been two different years, over the course of the five years I've been here, that we needed to hire and couldn't find anyone locally. So we went to Michigan State University, where they recruit from China. They put the teacher into a program, a three-year master's degree program. They supervise them during that period of time and continue their training while they're teaching with us. These are college graduates from China in education programs in China, but they're learning to be excellent teachers here. So we have two teachers that we need to continue contracts for. Christina Chen actually only needs a half-year contract because she's finishing her program. And Ning Ji. And Ning will need another year and a half, so will be coming back probably next year for her final half-year. And we've kind of done a study on this, and this is actually a cost-effective measure for us because we pretty much just pay a contract fee to MSU. We subsidize the rent a little bit, not much, and that's it. And we don't pay benefits, no insurance, so it's, it's not why we're doing it. But it's a good backup plan for us, so I hope you'll approve these contracts.
Any questions, Board members?
Yeah, Andy, are these figures similar to last year?
Yes, actually, this contract, $45,000 a year, has stayed the same each of the years that we've done it.
Any further questions? Seeing none?
I have a question. Do we have two more years of grants that we expect?
We have, we might have two more years of Asia Society Grants. We got $32,000 this year. We might get, that, that one, we don't really know about. They're kind of late in telling us. We have one more year of the Illinois State Board of Ed grant, and that'll be about $18,000 to $23,000, depending on how much they appropriate.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Michigan State University contracts for Mandarin teachers?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries six to zero. Then we have the approval of human resources items that were presented in your packet. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Motion carries six to zero. Now we move to the consent agenda, where we have the approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for March of 2013, the minutes of a joint board workshop from April 17th, the minutes of an executive session from March 19th, 2013, the minutes of a regular meeting from March 19th of 2013, and there is no disposal of audio recordings. Is there any item that a Board member would like removed for further, for further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Wold.
Aye.
Mr. Schuler.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
Aye.
Mrs. Fisher.
Aye.
Mrs. Rose.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Motion carries six to zero. Then we had some FOIA requests. We had one from Tashonda Schumpert of RJB Properties in Orland Park, Illinois. And we had two FOIA requests from Elena Windsor, alenawindsor@gmail.com. The announcements, Wednesday, April 24th, 2013, is the Cherokee Family Sharing Night. Thursday, April 25th, 2013, as I mentioned before, is the Spirit Grant Reception at 6:00 PM at Eloa Farms. Thursday, May 2nd, 2013, is the Spirit of 67 Home Tour. Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, is the Old Board, New Board Meeting at Lake Forest High School West Campus in the Boardroom. Friday, May 24th, 2013, is School Improvement Day with half a day of school. Monday, May 27th, 2013, is Memorial Day, no school that day. And Tuesday, May 28th, 2013, will be the next Board of Education meeting at 7:00 PM, Lake Forest High School West Campus Boardroom. I would like to remind Board members that before you leave, you need to sign the amended budget forms. On that note, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.